Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Warden.
I call this meeting to order. If you could stay standing for a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the new mayor of Brunel, Ladaw and Radlin, Sheldon Keller, to join us at the front for the oath of office.
As a member of the council, the corporation of the county of Remfro, I do solemnly promise and declare that on behalf of the county of Remfro, I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Welcome to the team councillor Keller. There are two issues with the agenda this morning. As you can see, the new mayor, Hencler Moran, is not with us and we will be striking the striking committee from the agenda as we don't have a quorum for striking committee. Mr. Hutton, could you do roll call, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Councillor Duncaster, councillor Donegu.
Here.
Councillor Emo.
Present.
Councillor Farr.
Present.
Councillor Keller.
Here.
Councillor Kingsbury.
Present.
Councillor Love.
Present.
Councillor McKay.
Councillor Miller.
Warden Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Beckett.
Present.
Councillor Reimwalt.
Councillor Robinson.
Present.
Councillor Stack.
Here.
Councillor Sweet.
Councillor Vizneski-Moore.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. At this point, I will ask if there are any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof. Seeing none, as we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many continued displays of friendship. Members of county council, during the month of August, I attended eighteen meetings on county business. On July 20th, 2017, I continued taping Coach Co. segments. Topics included Wild Personna, Summer Company, Silver Chain Challenge, Apple Forest Ontario Green Leaf Challenge. From August 13th to 16th, I attended the 2017 annual AMO Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference, held at the Shaw Conference Centre in Ottawa. During the conference, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus held a joint meeting with the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, meetings with both the PC Caucus and the NDP Caucus at a multi-nominal meeting. The Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus made presentations on proposed 1% increase on the HST, the fire medic issue of having firefighters assume greater medical and first aid duties, changes to the Ontario Municipal Board, and the issue of labour challenges in the province. We also discussed the proposal of increasing the provincial gas tax to four cents. On August 11th, 2017, I attended along with MP John Yakobuski and councillor Vizneski-Moore a meeting of the Bonnershire Watershed Management Plan. Thank you to councillor Vizneski-Moore for hosting. On August 16th, I brought greetings to the Regional 55-plus Senior Games in Pembroke. On August 24th, I attended the Summer Company wrap-up held in Elements Luxury Tended Camp and Nature Spa. Some of our summer company students will be joining us later today to overview their companies. On August 28th, 2017, I attended the announcement of the three new hospice beds at Marian Hill in Pembroke. Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Health, John Fraser, announced that the Marian Hill Long-Term Care Home will receive an annual operating funding of $261,600 for three new hospice beds. As you are all aware, councillor Glenn McKay was in an ATV accident this past weekend. Please remember councillor McKay and her family in your prayers as she recovers from her injuries. I will remind those assembled here the following. The county of Remfro experiences our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. Oh, sure, I can ask for that. Can I get an adoption of the minutes from June 28th? Councillor Emo seconded by councillor Vizneski-Moore. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thanks, Rose. At this time, we have a delegation. Ms. Carolyn Coverford, co-chair, Remfro County Youth Network, public health nurse, health promotion and clinical services, Remfro County District and Health Unit, to overview the Amplify project. Ms. Coverford, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Warden and members of council. Thank you for having us here today to be the voice of youth across Remfro County. I'd also just like to take a moment to welcome the Remfro County youth members that are here to support today. We have provided you with a package that should be in front of you that Rose got to you. So we just have a few minutes to highlight some things. So there are more details in that package. So I'm Carolyn Coverford. I'm a public health nurse at the Remfro County District Health Unit. And in my role and assignment to the social determinants of health with a focus on promoting positive mental health in children and youth, I support the Remfro County Youth Network in my role as an adult co-chair alongside the youth co-chair who's gone back to university and wasn't available to be with me today. So 15.5%, that was the approximate population of Remfro County youth aged 10 to 24 in 2016. This has declined from 18% in 2011. And we're concerned about this. There's a risk that this trend will continue. The danger of the current demographic projections demonstrate that our population is aging and that the youth core is at the risk of continuing to decline unless strategic actions are taken by the county agencies and by community members to ensure that youth will thrive. Some key areas that local youth have identified that we need to explore further in a Remfro County youth strategy are some things like civic engagement at youth leadership, so providing them with meaningful volunteer experiences to support their careers in the future. Building capacity, so providing them with education experiences, leadership opportunities and trainings, not only for them but for adult allies as well in youth engagement. Supportive environments, so providing safe, accessible facilities and spaces, ensuring that the youth can navigate the resources that are available throughout the county. Health and wellness, so access to programming and health services and train staff who work directly with the youth across the county. And also economic development. We need to explore these main areas further. We feel it's our duty that the youth in Remfro County are engaged, empowered and healthy and that they're able to contribute to our communities if we hope to retain them here while the job market is very competitive nationwide. So this is why we have a mission to develop, implement and sustain a Remfro County youth strategy. So when I speak to "we," who is this "we" I'm talking about? There's a few of the logos up on the screen here. The "we" is the Remfro County Youth Network. There's 52 members on the network currently. I realize you won't be able to read what's up on the screen but you do have a copy of this in your package. It's the Remfro County Youth Network Community Development Model. And I just want to highlight a few things on the far side here in the green bar on the left-hand side. So in 2003, the Remfro County Youth Association existed. In 2011, the United Way united with the youth Gen X cabinet. In 2012, the Healthy Community Partnership Community Engagement Session identified youth engagement as a priority. And in 2013, there was a Promoting Positive Mental Health for Child and Youth Stakeholder Day. And that's where the evolution of the Remfro County Youth Network began. So we'd like to take this opportunity right now to thank past wardens and members of council for your commitment and we hope that that commitment continues ongoing. So why a youth strategy? Currently, there is a roadmap in place for youth 0 to 12 for great programs like the Ontario Year-Year Center, the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. And there's also communities that have strategies for seniors like the Aging Friendly Community Plans. But nothing formally exists for youth 12 to 25 years of age. And we need great programs just like the ones I mentioned for that age group as well. A strategy will provide us with accurate information to enable us to make informed decisions regarding youth in each of your communities and the key identified areas that I mentioned previously on that first slide. While families are responsible for bringing up their children and raising their families, all levels of government and the partnership with communities have a responsibility to ensure that we put the health and wellbeing of youth first. So what will a strategy do for your community? I can tell you what we know what will do. A strategy will give you information and tools that you will need as a municipal leader to make informed decisions on things like programming, staffing, budgets and facilities. It'll provide direction, a framework, and an action plan for leaders, decision-makers and community groups on how to make youth wellbeing a key consideration when making decisions. And this is to ensure that the county of Remfro will be a youth-friendly community. Most should be aware that the Remfro County Youth Network has applied for youth opportunity funding in the past, twice. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful with securing the funds. However, we received overwhelming positive feedback about the strength of our application from the youth opportunities funding team. It's been a long road and I'd like to thank you all for your support this far. We did, from that feedback recently from the youth opportunity fund team, there is a smaller youth network working strategy group. And we did meet early in August and we decided that we would move forward and submit another application. We figured the third time's a charm, so we're going to stay positive and we've submitted expression of interest and the full application is due on November 15th. So the Remfro County Youth Network, we do value evidence and best practice and we base all of our work on that. So I just have a few models to highlight today. The city of Guelph in 2003 developed their first youth strategy and in 2012, the city of Guelph Community and Social Services Department undertook the process. And this strategy has provided them with a framework for future initiatives that will be taken on by the city of Guelph and community organizations in order to meet the needs of their youth. Also, since 2012, Kingston, through their youth strategy, has provided an opportunity for municipal government, community organizations, businesses and individuals to listen to young people and to hear their ideas and recommendations on how to better serve youth in Kingston. Closer to home, Lannard County. Since 2003, Lannard County has provided funding to each of their five Lannard County youth centers. And in 2015, the municipality of Mississippi Mills and United Way Lannard County hosted a What Matters to Youth forum to identify from youth and hear from them directly to get their input on how to better serve their community. One thing that these all do have in common is that they were able to secure additional funds from additional sources. So I'd like to thank you for your attentiveness so far. While we've been working hard to secure funding and to gain partnership with people locally to develop a Remfro County youth strategy, we have been successfully engaging youth through different initiatives and we'd like to highlight one today, our Amplify Youth Summit, which is an annual youth summit that the Remfro County Youth Network hosts. So I would like to invite Rachel Enright and Tanner Jessup up to share with you about that.
So hello, my name is Rachel Enright and I am a youth member of the Remfro County Youth Network and I am thankful for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Remfro County's youth. Over the past four years, I have been involved in student success at Opiongo, assisting vulnerable students in class and other activities. I have also been privileged to attend various training opportunities such as leadership conferences like Amplify. I have been a leader and participant in various clubs like Back Me Up, OSED, Interact and We Schools. This grant through Amplify provided us with the opportunity to facilitate the workshops that took place on Mindfulness Day, including great guest speakers. The grant money used for the action projects this year consisted of donations received from the RCYN, Remfro County Youth Network, last year. Over my past four years at Opiongo, I had the privilege of attending the Amplify Youth Summit twice. By attending these summits, I learned that Amplify offers great opportunities for students to become leaders, like team-building exercises and great guest speakers provided valuable information. One of these opportunities were grants. This past school year, the Remfro County Youth Network offered five grants that were open to all youth to apply for. The grants were used to support action projects within their schools. As a student leader at Opiongo, I was one of five students given the task of creating a leadership that I felt would help better Opiongo High School. For my leadership initiative, I wanted to focus on mental health as Opiongo has never facilitated a workshop focused on mental health for students in the past. And in today's society, youth mental health is in the forefront. Therefore, I completed a proposal for Mindfulness Day and it took place at Opiongo High School in the spring of 2017 and it was a great success. We offered various workshops focusing on mindfulness, including our very successful keynote speaker Craig Mackey of Essential Change. We also offered presentations regarding canine therapy, mindful eating, yoga, native drumming, and a former student from Opiongo shared their experiences with mental health. Now I'm going to have my friend Tanner Jessup talk about his leadership initiative.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tanner Jessup and I am a student leader at Opiongo High School. So I'm going to tell you about my experience with Amplify. Last fall, we went to the event Amplify at Wilderness Tours and it was amazing day. We were outside the whole time but we experienced little activities with different schools and everything like that. What I liked about it was that it was diverse. We were completely with just different strangers and everything but that was the best part of it. We got to connect with people that we've never met before and we had to do these activities with them. Amplify is an event that brings us all together to connect. We have nothing like this that brings us together like this around here so it's good to have something that's in the county to have this for us. So Amplify, so like we said with our leadership initiatives that we have throughout our school, Amplify gave me the idea to use the outdoor thing of bringing people together to do activities. So my leadership initiative was going to Bear Creek Outdoor Center. It was an overnight trip to the Bear Creek Educational Center. The trip consisted of over 10 students that were at risk, which we helped with on a daily basis at school. The excursion built on our leadership skills and we even received a few outdoor certifications such as Wilderness First State and Swift Water Rescue. The whole thing of Amplify gave me the idea of doing this stuff because I liked doing it. And the whole idea of bringing people together to work on their skills and everything is, I find that the best thing to do. I'm looking forward to going to attending the Amplify happening this fall. So I'll pass it back over to Rachel.
Yes, so at the moment, we are planning our fifth Amplify. It will be on Tuesday, October 17th, at Wilderness Tours in Forsters Falls. And the theme is "How to Find Your Natural High." So we will have a professional guest speaker talking about that.
Thanks, Rachel and Tanner. So how can you support the Remfro County Youth Network? Please partner with the Remfro County Youth Network on things like building a youth strategy through collaborative agreements. You can delegate a rep to sit on the Remfro County Youth Network so that we have representation from the county. You can promote RCYN initiatives in your community, so please talk about us and the need for Remfro County's youth strategy and the importance of it with local councils and also other levels of government when you go to conferences or meetings as such. Also, we welcome and invite to your tables. And I think that's it for our time. Again, thank you. We know there's lots of great things happening across the county but I think a lot of bigger and greater things can happen if we all pull together and have the same vision and work on the same things. So imagine the possibilities if we did have a Remfro County youth strategy. Thank you very much and I think we have time if there's questions.
Thank you so much and thanks to Rachel and Tanner, future leaders in our communities, I'm sure. Councillor Vizneski-Moore.
Good morning and thank you very much. To the two young people, I was very impressed with what you had to say. You truly are showing the leadership and what you do for the other kids that are in need and need help and you offer that service. You amaze me and I'm very proud that you're living in Remfro County and that we have such wonderful young people. And of course, the program is a wonderful program. I've got to think more about how we can participate at Killavag Green Ridges to support it. But again, it's a wonderful program. You are our future and we need to invest in that future. So congratulations, keep up the good work. We're very proud of you. You did very, very well. And thank you to you for the program. And we do, as municipalities, have to support the program and see what we can do to help you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, you must have done a very good job with very good questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since our next delegations aren't here, is there any correspondence, Mr. Hutton? Thank you. So as I said, we do not have striking committee. So we will move on to finance and admittance. Take it away, councillor Stack.
Thank you, Warden. For your finance admittance report, recommend this follows. Number one is the council remuneration report. Two is the treasurer's report. Three, the annual repayment limit. Four is FCM, Federation Canadian Municipalities Board. One is, and I didn't see Glenn here, I thought he might have commented. Five is a municipal one-third tax exemption and we discussed that at FNA. There's just some interest in finding out exactly where it stands, quite frankly. So we asked Glenn to check with FCM and we would ask Peter to do the statement, Emo, and keep us informed on that issue. The power to have, number six, a special payment program. Seven is a review of the financial services officer and as we go through this report, Jim and Jeff may have some comments on that. Eight, investing in Canada infrastructure phase two. Nine was Ontario's plan to strengthen rural and northern Ontario. And 10 was a template of the classification review and the recommendation to discontinue that process which has an annual cost of $20,000 because we do have procedures in-house now that address that issue. And again, as we review the report, Bruce or Jim may have a further comment there. Eleven is the municipal education session and environmental evaluation report for settlement of lands. Twelve is Bill 148, Fair Workplaces, Better Jobs Act. We've been into some detail with Bruce on that at the committee and again, he may have a comment later. Thirteen is Bill C44, Employment Insurance Act. Fourteen is the county of Remfro Summer Students Summary. Thirteen is the annual wardens golf tournament, which is September 8th through 17th. The discussion should be shorter than that today's, Mr. Sweet isn't here. And sixteen is the annual service awards banquet. We've encouraged people to attend Thursday, October 12th at the Pembroke Best West Burn Inn in Pompous Centre. Seventeen is a rural economic development program. Eighteen, new hires in human resources. And again, Bruce may want to comment on that. Resolutions. Resolution number FA-CC-17-08-84, moved by chair and second by committee. That the county council support the resolution. Permission, Ontario Wardens Caucus, support the association, municipalities of Ontario, and its efforts to secure the new source of revenue to help fund critical municipal service, link, road, bridges, transit, clean water and other services. And background is there. Number twenty is resolution number FA-CC-17-08-85, moved by chair and second committee. That county council support the resolution. Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus requesting the government of Ontario establish definition of rule for any funding involving the government of Canada's rule and northern communities' infrastructure fund as follows. A, municipal with a population of 30,000 or less. Or B, rural, single-tier or upper-tier municipalities with a population density of 50 people per square kilometer or less. Again, there's some background there. Bylaws, number 21, Valley Manor, resolution number FA-CC-17-08-82. New by chair and second committee that the county adopt a bylaw to provide for a full and final payment between municipal corporation, county of Remfro, Valley Manor Incorporated at this session of county council. We've had discussions over the last couple of months on that and the detail is all there in that one. Twenty-two revisions to corporate policies and procedure resolution, number FA-CC-17-08-80. Moved by chair, second by committee. The county council support the changes to corporate policies. A-03 recruitment. A-14 retirement and early retirement. And E-01 hours of work and overtime be approved. And further, that a bylaw to amend, bylaws 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies and procedures for the county of Remfro be adopted at this session of county council. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair and committee members Duncaster, Donegu, Murphy, Beckett, Robinson, Sweet and Vizneski-Moore.
Thank you councillor Stack. We'll go back to number one, remuneration. Number two, the treasurer's report. Number three, the annual repayment limit. Number four, FCM. Yes, I think the next time Glenn's in the room, he can dazzle people with all the committees he's on. Number five, the one-third tax exemption. Councillor Emo?
It was discussed at AMO in a closed session and what I can tell you in general is that it's still a topic of conversation and it would seem the federal government had underestimated the value that this particular regulation brought to public service and the discussions continue through the process.
Thank you for that update. And one of the questions that I had for Mr. Foswell... And one of the questions that I had for Mr. Fos was, this is part of the federal budget, so are they removing the one-third tax exemption on our federal tax or on our federal and provincial tax? Because that makes a difference as well. Councilor Stagg.
Yes, I spoke to Jeff before the last meeting and asked him to look into it, because we're getting some discussions at home and talking to other municipal representatives. It seems to be floating out there, but nobody really knows what they're doing with it. And there's, you know, a number of concerns in terms of our discussion. One is that there should be, in our view, a significant consideration for the size of the municipality and the earning potential when you're in these things, when you're in small urban or rural municipalities like the County of Rentford. And, you know, it's largely certainly as much a volunteer role as it is a paid role versus, you know, a municipality like Toronto or Ottawa or Hamilton, where you're in six figure salaries with an office and staff. And, you know, there should be some distinction there in terms of that. The other issue our committee now is, the County does, Airpare has a committee in the last year of a term that reviews remuneration per council. A community arms distance committee that does it, and they're wondering as to what they should do. If there's not going to be the tax deduction, should they be considering something to offset that or not? So everybody just seems to be up in the air with it, so we need to try and get some direction.
Thank you. Councilor Imo.
Yes, and I should mention that the floundering around is the direct result of the regulations haven't been tabled or amended. It seems, you know, a cynical person might suggest, I was hoping that they can just not implement it and everybody will trip merrily along. That's what a cynical person would think. So I think there are...
But you're not seven.
I mean, I don't think they're in a hurry to amend the regulations just yet. I think they're trying to go straight their way out of it.
Thank you. Anything further? Number six, the power dam special payment program. Seven, the FSO position. As Councilor Stagg said, we had lengthy discussion at FNA about this. Number eight, investing in Canada infrastructure plan phase two. Number nine, Ontario's plan to strengthen rural and northern education. The Templeton classification review. Municipal education session on the draft environmental evaluation report for proposed settlement lands. Number twelve, Bill 148. Again, lengthy discussion at FNA, and there's background there. Number thirteen, Bill C44. Number fourteen, the County of Rentford Summer Students, which we will be seeing later on. Number fifteen, the Wardens Golf Tournament. No trash talk. Bob Sweet's not here. How's the, oh, he's out. Number sixteen, the annual service awards banquet. I hope everybody can make it. Number seven, the red program. Number eighteen, the new hires. And I see them in the back of the room, and Mr. Meekley's back just in time to introduce them.
So, members of council at the back of the room, we have two new hires, I get the chair coordinator, Mr. Andy Armstrong. I sit beside him is Debbie Gerbe, my new administrative assistant.
Lots of new people today. Welcome to the team. All right, number nineteen, the resolution, critical municipal services. I would ask that everybody bring this back to your lower tiers. This is an excellent initiative that EMO brought about. We recognize that in an election year, no party is willing to raise taxes, but this is an excellent, excellent way to bridge some of the infrastructure gap. Number twenty, the Government of Canada's Rural and Northern Communities Infrastructure Fund. Number twenty-one, Valley Manor. Councilor Bisneski Moore.
I just want to thank everybody for supporting that. It's a good handshake, partnership, and County Council are very gracious to support them in their efforts to rebuild a new home. So thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you for that comment. Anything further? Number twenty-two. Seeing none, I'll ask for a mover.
So who?
Thank you, all those, oh, Councilor Imo, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I stopped for this. My apologies. On number one, you just did a little bit of inside, and we'll be getting a letter from me as name board member with the resolution and some background information on the HST initiative. I was just waiting to get the most current information, so it should come to your local councils, and I would have the motion, generic motion requesting your support. They'll also list for you the amount of money that your municipality will achieve on this . So at this time, the County of Rentford as a whole, including the county and the city of Pembroke and the seventeen of us that sit here, would receive approximately $30 million under this initiative, with the municipality receiving anywhere from, I believe, $200,000, which would be one of our smaller ones, through to nearly $2 million in some large. So I'll document that for you. You should get that by the end of next week, so if you get it when we're done, and myself and/or the some EMO representatives will be more than happy to come and give presentation if you'd like more information. But it's going to be a pretty thick package, around about 12 pages, so it should be good information in the background.
Thank you for that. Anything further? We've had a mover. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing none? Thank you. Since we still have time, we will move ahead to our operations committee. Councilor Pickett, please.
Thank you, Warden. We, your operations committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Number one, Ontario Community Infrastructure Funding. Advice that the county will be receiving up to $2,175,750 through OSIF over the next two years. That does, however, result in not having the ability to apply for the OSIF Top of Funding Program for 2017. Item number two, Highway 17 Expansion. I just decided I want to mention Councilor Imo and the work that he's been doing for in the background for this expansion push. Thank you very much for that, but we know that Highway 17 will be listed in the planning for the future. Administration secured approval to proceed with the detailed design of the next Highway 17 expansion base from Shield Drive to three kilometers west of First Street in Rentford. Highway, number three, Highway 17 Environmental Assessment between Haywood Station and Meathill. This is something that has to be done on a manual basis and reported to the county. Item four, quotations and tenders. The month of July 2017 is attached as appendix two. Number five, the monthly treasurer's report, Department of Variets Report. The report and the variance reports for the administration, maintenance, and capital are all supplied for you as attachment. Item six, monthly project status. Table is the monthly project status report for information to council. Bylaws, PWC 2017-34, request for proposal for engineering services for the rehabilitation of county structure B258, which is the Madawaska River Bridge in Airpare. Resolution number OPCC 170863, moved by Chair, second by committee. That proposal, PWC 2017-34, submitted by WSP Canada Incorporated, Ottawa, Ontario, for engineering services for the rehabilitation of county structure B258, Madawaska River Bridge in Airpare, and the amount of $199,890 plus HST be approved, and that a professional services agreement be prepared for design services. And further, that a bylaw to authorize execution of the agreement be passed. Background, there was extensive background there for here for Bruce. And it was word to WSP Canada, not the lowest tender, but the reasons that this was chosen are there for your information. Item number eight, County Rule 13, Monthly Writing, Resolution number OPCC 170864, moved by Chair, second by committee. That bylaw number 68-17, we rescind it, and that bylaw be passed, excepting the transfer of parts six and seven. 49r-18941 to the County of Rentford, and further, that part six, ten, seven, line 49r-18941 be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. Background, this is our council's information, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and members of McKay, Miller, Murphy, and Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pickett. We'll go back to number one, the OCIF funding. Number two, the highway expansion of Highway 17. Councilor Imo.
If I might add, I'm sure everybody agrees this is very good news. You can't smell the paper yet, but I think everybody knows about long-term strategy. We've had a series of check-offs, and this is probably number five from actually smelling paper, but it's good news. And to draw your attention to the first paragraph where the minister, I think, is a compliment to the efforts of the county over the last number of years, talked about economic development. It's not, it's not usual, you see that in a piece of correspondence about roadway or roadway settlements. So I think the message we've been giving them is pretty consistent, and I would think that, you know, it may also wind up with our initiatives with the federal government, but then one should be involved in as well. So it's a really well-crafted letter, and it's a nice, good advancement on this file for us, but we're not smelling paper yet.
Anything further? Well, I would like to congratulate Councilor Imo as former Warden for all the work that he put in to this very important piece of highway, and to everybody that attended meetings with the ministers in Toronto and the ministers in Ottawa. This was certainly a testament to the teamwork around these chambers, so I couldn't be more proud and thank you to Peter for all of your hard work.
Thank you, and, you know, I'll say that on behalf of everybody, because it wasn't me. We should also note the leadership by Minister Del Duca and John Yankeluski on this, their ability to talk across the aisle, and importantly, you know, the response to the community that's necessary, as opposed to cheap theatrics and not getting any done. So, you know, a real, you know, a real note of congratulation has to be to the minister and to John Yankeluski, as well as to the Kingston staff of NTO, the district office, they've been involved in this rightfully, and kept praise and offered information, you know, to help us close to our case, or made some suggestions about what wasn't necessary. So, you know, it's been a very, a very good process, but Mr. Del Duca and John Yankeluski deserve a great deal of credit for this.
Thank you for that. Yes, a lot of moving parts. All right then. Number three, the EA. Number four, the quotes and tenders. Number five, bylaw for Madawaska River Bridge. Oh, sorry, I missed number six. The monthly project update. Number eight, now, oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you back there.
Thank you, Madam Warden. As I wanted, if I could, to go back to number five, the treasurer's report, the environmental variance report. And through you, probably to the director, and certainly to the Chair also of the operations committee. If I can draw your attention, or council's attention, page 116, there's various chartings, the first of it being world reconstruction. And I note, I think there's 15 projects identified there. There seems to be some substantial variance from budget to projected. I guess that's August projection, the end. All but two of the projects are in excess of 20% of variance, and three are in fact more than double the budgeted amount. I'm wondering what has been the experience this year that seems to have reacted with the initially proposed amounts versus what is now anticipated to be spent.
I think I'll ask Mr. Boland to respond.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Councilor Donahue, a couple of things that happened over the last year. First of all, when we develop the estimates, we use benchmark costing on the estimates. Essentially looks at the length of the road and what we think will be required on the road in advance of any detailed design being undertaken. The challenge with that is that once we get into the detailed design and the tender preparation, there are occasions where we find things that we didn't anticipate, sometimes to the benefit of the budget and sometimes to the negative side of the budget, or they cost more. The other big issue that we began to notice this year is the asphalt prices. We're significantly lower, as we've reported previously to committee and council throughout the year, and that allowed us then to move a number of projects, expand a number of projects. So in some cases, those projects still remain under budget, even though we've expanded the scope of the project. In other cases, those projects have grown significantly. One that comes to mind is County Road 49, La Paz Road, where we went from a project that we anticipated a single surface treatment overlay for the entire width of it, and committee and council will recall that we brought a report forward, I believe it was in June, recommending that we do a combined tender, one with surface treatment, one with asphalt overlay, and the results of that were about a 20% increase in the price for that particular project if we went with asphalt overlay, but that also translates into a life expectancy approximately double of what they would have with surface treatment. So good benefit there. Beyond that, there are some projects that are not likely to move forward as quickly as we would like to. County Road 1, River Road in the Satin Point area being the largest one, and that's a function largely of resources. As committee and council are aware, we're struggling with resources in the department. We've had a number of people leave to pursue other opportunities, both on a personal level and a professional level, and that provides or presents another strain on the department and our ability to deliver all of the program. So we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have available, but we are struggling a little bit there as well.
Thank you. Supplementary.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and probably directed this also to Mr. Boland. On the next chart down on the, sorry, Bridge and Culvert Rehabilitation, I noted that there has been some significant unbudgeted items that appear at the bottom to the tune of approximately $540,000. And I'm just curious, because there are two projects that were budgeted that right now are projected at substantial, substantially less, that being the various unspecified repairs and also town line culverts. And I'm wondering for today, does one have an impact on the other? Are these unbudgeted items perhaps pushing back the town line culvert replacement over some of those other non-specified revotation initiatives?
Mr. Warden? Thank you, Warden. Through you, again, to council and Councilor Donahue. In terms of, yes, there are a number of changes, and as I indicated before, some of those changes are a function of the benchmark costing versus the costing that comes out as a result of the detailed design being moved forward. In terms of the town line culvert, this is the culvert that is on County Road 512 near Silver Lake Road, and that was part of our OSIF application for the top of funding that we submitted last fall, about October, as I recall, which we were subsequently turned down in terms of the funding application, or the funding was denied. So that project will move forward in terms of the engineering component, but not in terms of the construction component. So a significant change in the value of the work that will be completed in 2017. You'll notice a couple of other items there that were not budgeted for. One was the Alice Wilberforce Municipal Drain. This is a project that we undertook and advised committee and council of early in the year. This is a culvert on Lox... This is a, uh, a culvert on Loxley Road, uh, that was in an advanced state of failure. Uh, that started late last year, uh, and needed to be advanced. Um, the Shield Drive Twin Pipes are another one that was unbudgeted for this year. And, uh, with, uh, the cooperation of the Township of McNab-Brayside, uh, they were undertaking a reconstruction of Shield Drive. The opportunity presented itself to partner with the Township to move that project forward, and, uh, save some, uh, some money in the, in the broader scheme, uh, by not having to pay for the, uh, the roadwork component of that. We, we were paid for the culvert replacement, and the Township then looked after the roadwork above it. So, there was a partnership opportunity there that allowed us to move forward. There are some items there, bridge repairs general, um, that, uh, we keep in the budget or put in the budget to offset some of those un-unexpected or unanticipated failures that may occur. Uh, the washout on County Road Thirty being a good example, or the, uh, which was out of culvert, or the, uh, the Shield Drive Twin Pipes, which is another one that would come along. So, it kind of offsets a little bit, but, uh, yes, there are some variances there as well. The biggest one being the, the town line culvert, and the fact we won't be moving forward with construction this year.
Thank you. Anything further? On number six, Councilor Emo.
Uh, yes, um, just a note, uh, note, congratulations to, uh, to the Department and the Chair and the Committee. Uh, I was in Calgary last weekend to visit my mom, and spoke to some of the members in, in the committee. And they're very thankful for the upgrade of, uh, Five Eleven through the, through the village to the bridge. It was very necessary. The cat faces and some of the sidewalk work are all very necessary. And, uh, it makes it a little easier for them to get around with the communities, and it looks good. So, you know, I wanted to make sure I pass that on, and I had spoken to Councilor Kayla as well, a while back, and she was also very complimentary of it, so I just want to pass that on. And now just a question, if you might. Um, I see in, uh, County Road Seventy-One and some of the work we're doing with ditching, um, there are a couple of rock cuts left between the Matalaska River Bridge and the intersection with Seventy-One. Are those going to be pushed back again? Because the pressure might have been passed, they might be undermined a little bit because they're too far off. Is that part of the long-term construction plan?
Mr. Boland?
Thank you, Warden, through you to Councilor Emo. Um, we are looking at those rock cuts and, uh, trying to do the work that needs to be done. Um, some of it would be nice to complete, but other stuff needs to be done. We're trying to prioritize it on the, on the need basis.
Thank you. Anything further? Number seven. And number eight, Mountain Road. And the report as a whole. See, none. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks. Um, since we have five minutes before our next delegation, and we just have a corner in this room, I think we should take just a few minute break, okay? And we'll come back and, uh, introduce our summer students. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And at this time, I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Hutton to introduce our Renfrew County summer students.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Madam Warden and members of the County Council. This delegation, eleven, we have two groups of students here. We have the County of Renfrew, uh, summer students, which we will introduce at this point. Uh, Mike Barber is going to courageously come over and help us out with that. Uh, and the second part of the delegation will be the summer company students, and that will occur soon as, after the, uh, county students are introduced. I will have a video, and Craig will introduce that program. So, thanks very much, students. It's been great to have you here. I know some of you are returning, so, um, welcome. And I wish everyone the best at school, and that's all. Your Mike.
Give him some time, he'll get there. A plague has come over the County Council.
Good morning, Madam Warden, members of Council. Thanks for your patience. Um, it's my great delight today, as always, to, uh, stand before you at the end of the summer, if you will, and, and present to you, uh, the, the many great students that the county has hired, uh, to come on board, uh, to work with, and all the various departments and divisions. Um, you know, speaking from the experience in our own department, we've had Colleen, uh, onboard for a few years with us. I guess she won't be returning, she's wrapping up and, and moving on with her career, and we wish her the best, and as we wish the best to all of the, the fun young people that have partaken. Uh, we had twenty students again this year participate, and, uh, most of them are here today. Uh, some of them have moved on, uh, and getting ready for school again. Uh, so they're just going to explain a little bit today, as always, to you, uh, who they are, what department they've worked in, and, uh, you know, what their field of study is, and, and what they sort of learned from their experience here at the county, of being provided with such a great opportunity. So, without much ado, I'm going to turn it over and let them come up one at a time, and, uh, and sort of address you as Council and see how they do. And, uh, we wish them all the best, and thank you to each of you for your efforts this summer.
Good morning, Madam Warden, members of County Council and County of Renfrew staff. My name is Colleen Blood. I have worked in the Human Resources Department as a Secretary One for the past three summers now. I will be entering my final year of the Registered Practical Nursing Program at Algonquin College. During this summer, working for the County of Renfrew, I have learnt about municipal government working alongside Bruce Beakley. I have built on my medical skills through research and health promotion with Bevzado, and enhanced my clerical skills through data entry, among other things. I am grateful for the opportunity I have had to have worked in the Human Resources Department with the County of Renfrew. Thank you.
You should have used your nursing skills on him.
Uh, good morning, County Council. My name is Brad Kidd, and this is my third summer working as a junior engineering technician in the Public Works Department. Next week, I'll be going into the final year of my civil engineering degree at the University of Ottawa. Um, during my time at the county, I've learned many things, from surveying the field to assisting in project management. Because this is my final summer at the county, I'd just like to thank everyone downstairs at the Public Works Department for giving me this opportunity, and for being good teachers. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Montgomery. This summer, I worked as a junior engineering technician in the Public Works Department, going into third year civil engineering at the University of Ottawa. Um, during my two summers here, working for the county, I have learnt about the dedication required to maintaining good roads. I've assisted in the entire process of road reconstruction, from tending the office to paving on job sites. Thank you.
Uh, good morning, County Council. My name is Will Frederick, and I too worked as a junior engineering technician in the Public Works Department. Uh, this year, I'll be entering my second year of a civil engineering degree at Carleton University. Uh, during my summer, uh, working for the County of Renfrew, I've learned many different things about the field of engineering and construction projects. Throughout my summer, I have gained very valuable, hands-on experience that will help me throughout my engineering career. I'd like to thank all the Public Works Department for, for providing me with this experience. Thank you.
Uh, good morning. My name is Ryan Pedeker. Uh, this summer, I worked as a laborer in the Public Works and Engineering Department at the, uh, at the Goshen site. Uh, this fall, I plan to return to RCI for one more year before continuing with my post-secondary education. And, um, my experience this year with the county taught me just how important it is to work as a team, because every individual has a unique set of skills they bring to any task, and they can apply them in order to work as effectively as possible. Thank you for an enjoyable summer.
Good morning, Madam Warden and County Council. My name is Laura Briso, and I worked as the Public Relations Coordinator for the Emergency Services Department this summer. I have learnt so much about paramedicine, because I didn't know too much at the beginning, but I've learnt so much, and they're so involved with the community, which is amazing. And I've learnt a lot of new skills, for sure. I cannot thank Chief Michael Nolan enough, and all of the County of Renfrew for an amazing summer. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Um, my name is Ashley Rosner, and I spent the, my fourth summer at the Cobden Garage as a student laborer. Um, my field, I'm going to enter my fourth year at, um, Nebusnean University for criminal justice, and I've learned that safety and trust is a key aspect in maintaining a positive work environment. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name's Courtney Smith. This summer, I worked for my third year at the Pembroke Patrol as a student laborer. Um, my field of study is kinesiology at the University of Toronto. And during this summer, I learned the importance of teamwork and communication in the workplace, and how to effectively get your job done. Thank you.
Uh, good morning. My name is Joel Ferguson. Uh, this summer is my first summer working as a maintenance person at, for the Development Properties Department at Renfrew. Um, I'll be going back for my second year at Algonquin College in mechanical engineering technologists. And, uh, this summer, I learned the importance of maintaining your equipment you're working with, and doing that in a safe manner, and also working in a safe manner. Thank you so much for the summer, and hopefully see you next year.
Uh, good morning. Uh, my name is Brendan Cheedy. Uh, this is my, uh, fourth year as a maintenance person. Uh, Development Property, Development Property Department. Uh, my field of study is accounting, uh, at the University of Ottawa. Uh, during my summer, uh, working with County of Renfrew, I learned how to work safely, uh, while using different, uh, machines. I just wanted to thank Kevin again for the opportunity to come back this summer. Thanks.
So, thank you to you, all of you, for your efforts this summer, and, uh, if we can just get a quick photo with all of you, and perhaps the CAO and the Warden in the photo as well, uh, it'd be much appreciated, and, uh, we hope to see some of you at least, uh, next, uh, next summer as well again. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say congratulations to all of you, and I hope you all have a lovely school year, uh, for those of you that are finishing, and, and for those of you who are just getting into their chosen career path. So, I wish you all the best. If I sit on a chair, that'd be... That's professional photography, sir. There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Brendan. Now, I'd ask Mr. Kelly to introduce some of our, our summer company students. Oh, yes, we do a little bit of that. Do you want to show the video first?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Warden. Just before we, um, is this on? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? It's not on. At some point, I'm not new anymore, right? Summer still. Um, before we start, um, just a recap of who's here today. We have a, a participant or two from summer company, and these are the students that receive a, a small stipend to start their businesses, up to three thousand dollars to start their businesses for the, for the summer. So they get a half upfront, and then at the end of the year, they, they get the second half upon completion. And we also have some members from starter company that we've just phasing out, and now starting summer, uh, starter company plus. These are more mature folks, uh, who have decided to become entrepreneurs, and have received funding and appropriate training to, to carry on in, in their business. So, before I introduce them, uh, there will be a video, but I wanted to, to thank, uh, Colleen Sather and Kim Fraser, of course, from Enterprise Renfrew County, who are here, can wave, who have mentored and coached throughout the, throughout the years, plus all the mentors that we have involved in the programs, and thanks to them. And of course, to, to Alistair Baird, the manager of Economic Development, for his leadership through this. So, uh, with that, we'll show the video, if you don't mind, Rose, and then we'll bring up the, the participants. While, while we're just getting rid of the technical difficulties, it's worth noting that this, uh, video was produced by Revel Media, who were starter company, um, members last year.
Uh, I would recommend this program because it is a great learning experience. You learn so many lessons. You learn a whole bunch about customer service, time limit, and those things you do every day, but not unless I can elude, and I think really neat experience when you do it every day.
My name is Mitchell Hawley. My business is media design yard work, and we're located in Bruton, Ontario. Media Design Yard Work is a yard work and lawn maintenance company. We specialize in lawn mowing, raking, and trimming. I chose Lawn Gear because I really love being in the outdoor. It's a great place, especially during the summertime when it's not snowing, and I love meeting people. So, I open a business in this field. I was able to combine all those things into one and make the best of it.
My name is Leah Trainer. I'm located in Douglas, Ontario, and my business is Leah Trainer Photography. My company is basically photography, taking family photos, or pet photography, any type of birthday party or special event. What attracted me to the summer company program is that I could be my own boss and run my own hour to work whenever I wanted.
My name is Gavin. My business is digital marketing. I'm located at the Wall. I specialize in converting old media sites into digital formats. Some of the formats we converge photographs, old negatives, and slides. I think that the most valuable lesson that I've learned from starting my own business is work ethic, and that you don't make anything that allows you work for it.
Hi, my name is Hannah Anderson, and I'm the owner of CG Sports Parties. My company offers princess and superhero characters, birthday parties, and public events in Cabo Valley. We strive to create a magical experience for the young and the young of us. The most rewarding part of my summer company experience is watching my business grow in such a short time. It started as small, but it's constantly growing and getting better.
My name is Kate Riley, and I own Kate's Cakes in Perron, Ontario. Kate's Cakes provides custom cakes, cupcakes, and cake pops. And I've had a passion for baking since I was little, so I thought I could turn it into a business company. I heard about summer company from my school, and since friends have started asking for cakes, I thought I'd do a program and help me start the business up and make it a successful business.
I'm Josh Robbins, and, uh, I'm located in Pitts River, and I make beeswax candles. Uh, my company name is Bees and Wax. For my summer company, I am making beeswax candles that are a hundred and two percent pure beeswax. I chose to do a summer company because I had a friend who did it, and she enjoyed summer company. And, uh, I wanted to do something fun. The most valuable lesson that I've learned is that it's not, uh, an easy task to own your business. There's a lot of work behind it. I would recommend this program to other students because it, uh, keeps you busy, and is a lot of fun, and it's really good, uh, knowledge for whatever you want to do later on, if you want to go your own home.
By the way, I didn't tell Mitchell that we have ride-on lawn mowers, and I did ask him if he mowed that whole field by hand. He said no. So I had the opportunity, and I'd like to thank, uh, Craig and Alistair, and Colleen and Kim, uh, for including the, you know, summer company wrap-up, uh, picnic, or barbecue, um, where I had the opportunity to meet these, uh, young entrepreneurs. I was completely impressed, and I'm glad that we have a couple of them here today. Thanks.
Thanks, Warden. So, I'll just ask those who are here if they can come forward. We've got Kate Hurley.
Kate brought cakes.
You know, this is just what we've been all waiting for. I'm gonna ask Fatima Ford and Yvonne Keller to come up as well. And I think they're gonna talk about your business just for a few minutes if that's okay. All right?
Is that the salted caramel? I love you.
I can hold those for you.
You're being watched.
Good morning, my name is Kate Hurley and I own Kate's Cakes located in Pembroke, Ontario. I make custom cakes, cake pops, and cupcakes. This summer I sold my products at the Pembroke Farmers Market as well as to custom orders. I've had a passion for baking since I was about six years old and with the help of Summer Company, I was able to start up my own business. I plan to continue it part-time throughout the school year and hopefully full-time again next summer. Thank you.
So, everyone knows Kate is actually responsible for that beautiful Canada One Fifty cake that we have at our June 28 County Council meeting.
Good morning, Inspector Counsel. My name is Fatima Foyjelani and I'm the owner of Valley Market Simosas. Before I started company, I was at one farmers market. Currently, we're at five and we open our own storefront this summer. Starter Company made my vision a reality and I'm very thankful and Colleen and Kim did an excellent job and thank you all very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Yvonne and I'm the owner of Dust Studio and we are a graphic design agency in Laurentian Valley. We do branding for logo design, websites, and stationery, anything you could really need for a business to thrive. I brought some cards today. So, we've been full-time now for over a year. I was a Starter Company graduate and I was very lucky and got a grant which helped me purchase computer equipment and software that sped up my workflow. So, now I actually was able to hire someone to help me with my work since we've grown so much over the last year and I'm really, really grateful and thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce myself and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I think some of them have brought their own business cards, so if anybody wants food or photographs or otherwise. Photo, if you can.
Absolutely. I was just wondering if anybody had any questions for...
I want to know what's in the box.
They are salted caramel cupcakes and I am not a dessert eater, but I was so tempted by one at the barbecue that I had two.
Want me to hand them out now or I can leave them in the kitchen with the cupcakes?
I was wondering where your storefront is.
Our storefront is located in Mayneville, but we live in...
Other duties as assigned.
Are you flashing or not in here?
Not. It's already set on. I wouldn't say we struggled, but we certainly had to work hard to get the program out to get people that are interested in. We've been very happy, I believe, at least I have been, to the programs in 2006. Very happy with the people who've been part of it. But I think with any program, successfully you want to expand into a number of different participants. Is there anything that you quickly need to think of that'll help us market it or attract a number of people of your age to consider setting up their own operation for the summer and then moving on to start a company group? Because we do need, as we saw this morning through the slide from the youth network, we need more young people to remain in the county and for them to remain and have to flourish. So, is there something quickly you can tell us about what attracted you and what might work to attract other people?
Okay, I didn't even hear the whole thing, but I think you're asking how to attract younger people to do the start program. Truthfully, what attracted me is I knew about the program and I knew that there was an expiration date. When I turned 30, there was no opportunity for me to take it. So, I knew I had to do it before I turned 30, which is my driving force and why I decided to apply. So, that maybe having a timeframe will help people join and knowing that the opportunity is not going to be there forever. So, it just gives it a bit of push.
I would suggest more advertising. So, I heard from one of my friends who started it because she didn't get the grant, but I couldn't find it. I actually wanted to apply about three years prior and I couldn't find it. And just by digging, 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 looking, I'm pretty persistent, I stumbled across it. So, I would say more advertising because by being in the farmers market, there's so many younger people that are entrepreneurs and they want that opportunity, but they just don't know where to find it.
Which is true. I only heard it from a friend. I never saw any advertisements. So, I was wondering how I heard the program.
And from me, my co-teacher told me about it, but even more advertising in schools or Summer Company during presentations and classes, because I'm sure there are lots of listeners that would like to start their own business.
Both have some suggestions for you to refer to. Tell Sarah Mo.
If I may, just to stop, I would create then to Mr. Kelly and I guess the Dr. Development Committee. Is it possible to take this video and try and get it out under the Warden's signature to opening up the boards, the two education boards, the two main ones in the county, in the fall to introduce it to the boards? Because I've had some conversations with some of the board members who are very interested in a similar venture in terms of attracting and keeping younger people in the community. So, it might be not in time to get it into the board and then have the board direct it into the appropriate staff resources.
Through you, Warden. Absolutely. This is a very polished piece, as you see, and I think even the owners, well, we are now the owners of the video. They've provided it to us. We have some license to edit it. I'm sure we work with the people who cut the video to further reduce it even to a 10-second or 15-second commercial if we needed to. But as a standalone social media on our own website, it's a good piece to go forward with. And this is the new medium, obviously, is video. Not necessarily new, but to push it out is exactly what we'd hope for. So, absolutely.
Counsel Kinsbury.
I want to take this opportunity as well, Warden, to thank Alistair Baird and Colleen for her way of both the wife and I for the wrap-up session of the barbecue. And I have to say that I did follow my example. I also had two desserts available.
That means none today.
That means you don't get one of the four or six that are here today, right?
Counsel Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to congratulate all of the participants here on showing such tremendous initiative and ambition and not just from both perspectives, from the Summer Company and the Starter Company of this is to incubate and these ideas, the initiative that's shown is absolutely dynamic. And how you've taken that and now from that basis, launched into what are no longer Starter Companies but are now companies. So, congratulations outstanding.
Thank you. Anything further? And again, oh, sure. Again, congratulations to all of you. Do you have more of the Summer Students?
I have cupcakes.
Keep your lips off the cupcakes.
Colleen and Kim, could you please want to come into the picture of this?
Did you bring Simosas? Yeah. Give them some. And you have Simosas or one of my favorites. Everybody over here. One, two, three. You are the small train of some of us. And you're all more than welcome to join us for lunch in probably half an hour. Where's she going with the cupcakes? All right, since we've got some time before lunch, I think we will forge ahead with the DNP committee and I'll ask Counsel Dwyer to take us through that.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we here Development Property Committee worship and report and recommend as follows. Number one, the planning division activity report. Congratulations to the towns of Penang, Breside, and the town of Rentford. You'll notice they value 30 and 100 for water and lots of in their communities. The Paris Climate Change Agreement. Number two, or sorry, number three is the Ottawa Business Journal Campaign December 2016 to July. Two standalone full-color magazines are created, one focusing on winter tourism and recreation in the county and the second release focused on entrepreneurship and investment in the county. Their each summer issue was supported by three new stories released in two week intervals. Number four, the Ottawa Valley Maple Adventures. It'll happen again between May 1st and November 1st and there are six local tourism operators who are participating and we thank them for their donations and their interest in this initiative. There's a brochure under your desk with regards to the Maple Adventures. Number five, Sustainable Forestry in Algonquin Park. There's a letter from Premier Min and the local councillor, McGarry. Number six, Green Leaf Challenge. We note 30,183 trees planted this spring and we are in top spot in the small organization category. Number seven is the HVAC project here at this building. Note the final paragraph. The capital budget was $750,000. The cost overall is approximately $55,000 and there'll be a resolution brought forward. Number eight, Bill 139, you want to be a reform. Again, the last paragraph comments are to be tabled prior to August 14 and the committee directed staff to submit the table briefing for this purpose. Number nine, Resolution Number DPCC 170857 moved by Chair, second by committee of County Council supports the following resolution by the East Ontario Wardens Caucus on the Via Rail High Frequency Rail Project. I'll note that there are four points that are of significance and would ask that you also take this to your local municipalities. Number 10 is Drap Species at Risk Guide, Resolution Number DPCC 170860, moved by Chair, second by committee of County Council supports the following resolution. And again, it speaks to something we've been talking about for some time. There's some background information. Number 11, the Pembroke Area Property Study, Resolution DPCC 170862, moved by Chair, second by committee. The County Council authorizes the additional funding of $15,000 from the 2017 County Rentford provision for unallocated funds in order to receive the Pembroke Area Property Study. You'll see a fairly informative background report on that. Number 12, bylaws, Resolution Number DPCC 170858, moved by Chair, second by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to execute a contribution agreement between the Rentford County Community Futures Development Corporation and the County Rentford for funding various economic development initiatives. Unfurther that the Warden Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be authorized to sign a letter of contribution agreement on behalf of County Rentford. The local projects, A to F, Starter Company Plus, Site News Magazine, Trail Strategy Development and Environmental Assessment, Maple Culinary Tour, His Development by Economic Development Services, and the Ottawa River Heritage Designation Marketing and Promotion. Number 13, Resolution Number DPCC 170859, the County Council passed a bylaw to execute an agreement between the Ministry of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Affairs and the County of Rentford for funding an economic development website and social media platform of content update. And further, that the Warden Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be authorized to sign a contribution agreement on behalf of County Rentford. Background information, 9500 is slot to assist, which is 50% of the project value of $19,000. Number 14, Resolution Number DPCC 170861, moved by Chair, second by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw and entered an agreement with OTO, Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization to receive funding in the amount of $5,000 to assist with the development of the management plan to Algonquin Trail, Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail, and to complete an environmental assessment review of the CN rail. Unfurther that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of County Rentford. And just prior to that, on your desk, you'll note inside Rentford County, page three, the population has decreased by 6.5% in the last five years. Some information on video company, also on our high-tech cluster and the quality of life. So, all the good information for you to have that you want in the public to market our community. All of which is respectfully submitted by Robert Sweet, the Chair, committee members, myself, Counselor Love, Counselor McKay, Counselor Miller, and Warden Murray.
Thank you. We'll go back to the beginning. Number one, the activity tracker. Number two, the Paris Climate Change Agreement. Three, the Ottawa Business Journal Campaign. Four, the Ottawa Valley Maple Adventures. Number five, Sustainable Forest Chain in Algonquin Park. Number six, the Green Leaf Challenge. Very exciting that we won in our category. Number seven, the HVAC program. Counsel Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I note that the, it's imprecise at this point, the 55,000, I think is perhaps an estimate or projection of the costs. I am curious, the, it is put forward that these unanticipated costs will be funded from unallocated funds, but I note that the building reserve for, the reserve for building is estimated at the end of the year will be in excess of $2 million. So, how do we decide at the county, as we have a reserve dedicated for building, that we don't use that fund rather than the unallocated funds?
Thank you. I think Mr. Foss is best to answer this. I also said at the DNP meeting that this is not an excess on the HVAC system. This is roof repair. So, it's, although it appears that we went over budget, we didn't go over budget for HVAC, the roof needed repair and that, of course, is an asset to us doing it at the same time. Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Warden. And through you to Counsel, I believe that the proposal contained in the report was really one of the strategies for funding the excess, as the Warden mentioned, of the approved budget and the final project cost, which now includes some roof repair. Had the roof work been known at the time, we would have included that in our longer-term capital plans and would have been part of the long-term financial plan and we would have funded it through that mechanism. So, I think we still at sort of a staff level need to have some discussion once the final amounts are known about how we really want to complete this funding piece. We have the option to use the provision for unallocated funds, that $300,000 budget per year, because that's still available to us. But I think there's a good case that can be made that this could be part of a longer-term capital plan and be funded through that program. So, as the report suggests, I think a resolution will come back to committee and council about the final amounts and then the final funding plan, if you will.
Something, don't you?
So, yes, thank you, Madam Warden. So, is it correct then that even though within this report today, it is suggested it would come from allocated, unallocated funds, that it is still a question for discussion as to where the funds would come? that it is still a question for discussion as to where the funds would come?
Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Warden. Certainly, the proposal from the DNP committee is that we have the provision for unallocated funds. There's still some room available within that $300,000 budget, so if that's a strategy. I guess my point on that is that, as you mentioned, there could also be an argument made that had we known about the roof work, we would have included it in the long-term capital plan and funded it through that process. So I would like the opportunity to sort of discuss at the staff level, once the final amounts are known, how best to move forward with this. But those are certainly two options that are both available to resolve the overage, if you will.
Oh, councillor Donahue.
Yes, sir. Sorry, just one more then to clarify. Certainly, in our schedule of reserves, there is the TCA reserve, which is dedicated towards the long-term financial or the long-term asset management plan and financing the same. But there is still a building reserve that is going to have almost $2.4 million in it, which seems, suggests to me that they are two distinct things, that if our money's to be spent on building, it seems to me appropriate to take it from a building reserve as opposed to an unallocated funds.
Thank you, Warden. And just in response, so as councillor Donahue mentioned, we have a number of reserve funds that are set aside or dedicated, if you will, to capital purposes. And councillor Donahue mentioned two of them, but there's probably 15 or 16 of them. And in total, they're about, currently about $20 million or $21 million that we have sort of established as being the basis of our long-term financial plan, dealing with capital asset renewal. So that would be very logical, that if we were to use some of the reserve funds to fund this overage, that those funds are available in the building reserve category. But the TCA renewal reserve also responds to asset renewals such as this, and so that would be an option to us as well. So as I mentioned before, I think the reserve funding piece as part of our long-term financial plan, that's an option. And if committee and council chooses, we certainly also have some room available in this provision for unallocated funds.
Thank you, councillor Stack.
Yeah, I agree with my colleague Mike. But I think the issue today is that it's saying it will come from allocated funds. So we need to maybe amend the wording today. Jeff says he wants to have further discussions with staff, and then go back to council. You know, it has to be done, and it will be paid for, but whether it comes from reserve or unallocated funds, in my mind, from Jeff's position, is undetermined today. So I think it's gone for us to vote and say it will come from unallocated funds.
Thank you, Chair, members of council. Certainly, just to back up a little bit on this discussion, I don't mean to belabor it, but when Craig came to me with this issue, I talked to Craig about Craig delaying capital projects in the DNP progress amendment. And I said, "No, it doesn't make sense to do that with guts and reserve funds." That this was an unknown expense. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to Jeff at the time. So I think it can go back to committee with the resolution, as Jeff said. This is an information item. I don't know that it's a resolution of council. If it was a resolution of council, I'd be a little more concerned. It is an information item, and we'll come back to committee as a resolution. And at that point, we'll have background in there with the recommendation, one reserve or the other, with their appropriate reserve, pending my discussions with Jeff. I don't think this information item ties us to the unallocated reserve. Understand where you're coming from, and we can certainly strike to remove that sentence out if that gives you some comfort.
I just, I read it as this was an estimate, and when we had a firm idea of how much it was, then there would be a resolution that would come forward to committee and county council. I see councillor Eamonn as well?
Yes, and again, I would agree with that analysis I've been suggesting. There is and is likely some curiosity, you know, about this specific building fund, how much is in there. But again, I think there has to be a measurement of, with a more detailed report coming back, of what bills are earmarked for, what is necessary in the next four or five years? Is there enough funds in that to cover that? Was that the projection? And since this is, since this was unanticipated, it's probably left here for that reason until we get a better handle on what that money that's already in the reserve is earmarked for. Is there any of that work incorporated in? So there's a bunch of other things that have to come together. So this was more of an attempt, I believe, to bring it forward, but also just to inform council, but also just to get a sense of the scope of the work, get the work done, and then we'll have to figure out the financing from one of the reserves at some point, I suppose.
Thank you. Councillor Stack?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it either, but I think it's just as easy to amend the sentence to say that the funding source is to be determined, you know, when the resolution comes. Because, you know, the public were saying today we're taking it from unallocated funds, and we've got our finance department saying they'd like to review it. So it's a bit of a contradiction that can be easily cleared up, I think, by doing that.
Mr. Hatton, can we have a friendly amendment?
Sure, we could change that, if we may, Chair, through the committee, to utilize funds from an appropriate reserve to be determined.
Would that, I've seen a lot of the nodding hats, that's preferable? Okay, thank you. Well, that will move ahead. I have no idea where I am now. Number eight, Bill 139. I got lost in the shuffle there. Councillor Kingsbury?
I'm just wondering if we could get an update from councillor Eamonn on Eamonn's position on this, because I don't believe these changes would have stand for any of us sitting here.
I don't have in front of me, so I'll go from memory. We were supportive of it in a limited fashion with four points that we disagreed with. I can't recall what they were. We've since been taken to the woodshed by the CEO group of Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and I'm working to try and get summary consideration of Eamonn's position on it. I don't have in front of me, councillor, and I wouldn't want to paraphrase it because it's such a nasty little issue.
Thank you. This is something that the EOWC spoke to the local caucuses and the ministers about, and I think I'm going to pass it off to Jim, who, of course, was a former planner and spoke to this issue at Eamonn.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I caught that, councillor, as I said. The at Eamonn, as the Warden mentioned, this was one of our issues. Councillor Eamonn was there as well as passed, Warden. The EOWC and the County Rent Re actually submitted a brief to the province to make sure that the county had appeal rights to official plan changes, which is the key issue. We know we have an official plan coming forward. So Eamonn did not, in their submission, did not mention that. So we have sent a letter from EOWC to Eamonn, which our representative councillor Eamonn is aware of and has indicated, he'll be taking that up with Eamonn, to try, now, from the, the letter I got from Eamonn, it said the board would be taken in direction. I'm not sure if it's been submitted yet. So I think councillor Eamonn is going to take that up with the board, and hopefully, Eamonn will see it the same way as the Wardens Caucus and our county comments were, that the county, along with local tiers, should be given appeal rights to provincial policy changes, which is the key issue for us. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Curious if Roma has taken her position on this particular issue, and if not, perhaps there should be some communication through that also.
Councillor Eamonn?
My impression is that Roma has essentially mirrored the position of Eamonn. I believe I saw approximately the same wording going forward. And if I might, I might suggest you the Eamonn recommendation that was pulled up in email. The OMB jurisdiction and powers need to be reviewed. Citizen participation perspective needs to be reviewed. The clear and predictable decision-making must be reviewed as well, and the modern procedures and faster decisions was highlighted, as well as the ultimate dispute resolution, viewer hearings, were issues that were highlighted in some of the conversations and submissions. You know, I had to try to get something more specific and circulate.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing number nine, the EOWC resolution for Via Rail. Number 10, the Drap Species at Risk Guide. Number 11, the Pembroke Area Property Study. Bylaws. Number 12, the EODP, I'm sorry, councillor Donahue. Are we going back to number 11?
Actually, sorry, I apologize. I was a little tardy there. It was on the species at risk.
Oh, alright. So we're going back to number 10?
Whatever the number is, for species at risk, yes, absolutely. And I have no issue with this. Let me back up. I have significant issues with this entire undertaking. The starting point, of course, being this predicated upon an individual species is supposed to have that and be an all ecosystem approach. So I'm fully in favor of this, but it has been my habit that when I encounter things that I'm not familiar with, it's something that I'm going to be endorsing. There's a paragraph on page 126, "Be it resolved with respect to caribou. The Government of Ontario need to modify Ontario's proposed caribou prescription by moving," I don't have to finish it. I don't know what any of that means. Is there anybody in the room that knows what that means? Like, we're going to have a resolution adopted by this chamber. And if everyone else is familiar with that uncomfortable, that's fine. But if I see information and I don't know what it means, I would like to have it explained.
Mr. Kelly?
Well, I'll start. The person that comes to mind is Lacy Rose, our forester. All I can tell you on this is that the Ontario Forest Industry Association, we have a number of members in the County Rent Re, some very prominent members, the Bart Brothers, the Shaw's, a number of others. And the Canadian Forest Industry Association, executive director Garrett Nigger was here at the DNP and gave a presentation on this issue. Other than that, I can't provide you any. So all I can say is our local industries are very supportive of this resolution. If you, unless Craig can provide us with some specific information on the caribou and the impacts, I don't think we're going to get any here today. I'll just ask Craig if he has anything to add.
Through you, Warden. No, that was just, I was going to suggest the same thing. The science behind it all could be addressed by Lacy Rose, but as I understand it, the caribou range, the caribou, obviously, is a northern issue, but it will affect our mills locally because the range of areas to cut for the purposes of logging and lumber will be greatly affected because they're removing the caribou range further south and removing acreage, hectares of operation.
And that was my understanding from Garrett Nigger's presentation as well. Councillor Donahue?
Just for clarity, it's safe to say that it's simply a definition, i.e., even in the most recent, in the review, the current review of the official plan. I know that for the life of me now, I can't think of it, but Renfrew County had been completely removed from one of these regions. And now with this new provincial plan, they have extended it. I know in the mine municipality. So is that simply a definition of the territory or habitat of the caribou? Is that what this is referring to?
Through you, Warden. Yes, that's how I understand it.
Thank you.
Councillor Keller?
Yeah, I may through you, Warden. Yeah, my knowledge on this is that basically, the caribou area that they're, they want now is basically affecting the cutting area of forest companies in the north. So to me, that's, yeah, they want that line moved further north to resolve a less impact on the forest industries, which will ultimately result in a less harvestable area for those companies.
Thank you. Day number one, and he's already jumping in. Councillor Eamonn?
Well, I can also, I should have brought this up earlier. It tells that I had some conversations with manager of phone home at the EAMW meeting. They had presented with us to, one of the, FOFA, about four years ago, they remembered that we had presented the paper on species at risk and also the neighbor's species act. So they pulled that out, and we met and walked through that. So they may be taking a similar approach. So they might be approaching Mr. Keller in his department about that, because they like the structure of it. And I had my laptop, so I was able to pull up some more information, some of the presentations that myself and Chair had been on. So it's very concerning that, yeah, it was the character of the caribou, the movement of the caribou grounds. For lack of a better description, that was a primary concern. There were some other, what, at least 12 other issues with the legislation.
Thank you. Anything further? And we'll carry on. Number 11, the property study. Number 12, the EODP. Councillor Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I was in some discussion with Director of Property Development, Mr. Keller, earlier. I'm just, I'm a little bit confused in this because this seems to be suggesting, not within the report, but within the appendix or Annex A, that the estimate that would be provided for both the review of the environmental assessment of the CN and the development of trail management for the Algonquin Trail would be almost half of the total funds being expended, 50% provided, and the 50% of the county's money. That is, $84,000 is estimated in that annex to go towards those two projects. And in addition, at number 14, we will note that through the Ontario Highlands Tourism, application is being made for a further $5,000, or more precisely, almost $5,200. And again, contribution from the county of a matching amount of $5,200. So now we're at $10,400 plus $84,000 estimated in this application, or of $94,000 towards these two initiatives, one being the review of the CNDA, the other being the development of trails management strategy. I go back, what's, I'm confused in the amounts. I'm wondering if they have been allocated appropriately in this funding application, because it seems to be substantially more than was initially discussed in April, where I think the total expenditures were on the order of $60,000, with a provision of half of that at being $30. And then in June, I know that we did, by resolution, engaged the Chair for Trails Council, I think, for the sum of approximately $14,000, to develop the trail management plan. It was supposed to have been delivered tomorrow, August 31st. And now it seems that that sum has grown substantially. So I know it's a complicated question, and I hope I haven't lost everybody in this discussion. I have discussed briefly with Mr. Keller. Perhaps he would be the appropriate one to shed some light on that, or certainly the vice-chair of DNP, however they see fit.
I'll let Mr. Keller be seen. You and a teen needs some confidence.
Press the button, Craig.
Thank you, Warden, for that reminder. Through you to councillor Donahue. Thanks for the heads up as well, councillor. I have asked staff to pull the original application out, and it would seem that the CFTC is very supportive of our trails initiative. But I'm reminded that we actually only applied for about $25,000 worth of project costs for strategy and the environmental review. So I will go back. These amounts are, or are spent up to this amount, and though we've never thought that we'd ever spend $84,000, I think we only ever anticipated spending up to $25,000. So I will have to ask the CFTC why they were overzealous in their $84,000 gift to us, or at least half of the gift to us. Because that was never the intent, going back to the original fund. Just to remind committee and council, the environmental assessment review is about $10,000, give or take. And the trail management plan is, as you mentioned, by the proven more than 15 or so. So we'll stick to original estimates at 25. I guess with the $84,000, there is room for overruns, but we're not anticipating spending anywhere near. It'd be nice if we could apply that towards trail improvements, but I suppose if we can make that recommendation to them, if they will allow that, then we can put 50% of the money to be spent. But at this point, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Yes, I, if there is possibility of it being repurposed, I'm certainly in favor of that. The other thing that I just wanted to ensure also, in, so I think there are seven distinct proposals that were put forward, each of which has a particular envelope. So I want to ensure that those other six So I want to ensure that those other six envelopes have been funded appropriately to what the request was, that this is perhaps, to ensure that this is not a clerical error in the assignment of these funding envelopes.
Thanks again, Ward, and through you, sorry to answer that question, yes, absolutely, all the allocations have remained the same. This was a clerical error, I would suppose, or over-supportiveness of the trail strategy.
Councillor Evo?
Yes, on behalf of councillor Stack, we need a local trails advisory group for communities tomorrow, and we'll make sure that we bring this forward. And I would suggest to you, the approach would be that we would likely make a sub-submission or a full submission, suggesting how to, how best to use that extra funding. Thank them for their generosity and their vision in supporting this project, but thank you for bringing that forward, councillor Dutton.
Thank you. Anything further? Alright then. Number 13, funding application conditionally approved. And number 14, Odo. The report is a whole. Seeing that, I'll ask for a mover. Thank you, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? There's lunches here, and it's a hot lunch. Oh, might be, yes. So I think we'll take a half hour break, back at 12:30. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We all had a great lunch and a cupcake. And at this time, we will move on to health committee. Councillor Bissaski, more please.
Thank you, I'm still smacking my lips from that. Okay. We here Health Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the resident population. Number two is the CCAC waitlist information. Number three is the ambulance act legislative consultants, including fire medic, med, I think. Number four is the special teams on the RAP program. Number five is the public access EPID program. Number six is the silver chain, and I want to congratulate the County of Redford. And I'm told by our chief, Nolan, that the summer stew with Laura was instrumental in helping us win that. So I want to thank and congratulate Laura on that. And then I think I've seen somewhere that, was it Armperd, it did so well? Good for Armperd.
I stay out of their way.
And then the work that, and next is number seven, the Champlain Lynn. Number eight is the Health Links, and then the Champagne Plain Lynn. Network funding increase, and that's good news for us. The public inquiry into long-term care. Number 11 is the Fiddle Fest. 12 is the outbreak at the Manor. Number 13 is the Medal for Volunteers Award, and I want to congratulate Mrs. Donaldson. Number 14 is the Boncher Manor foundation. 15 is WSID schedule. Then we move on to number 16, the resolutions. Resolution number HCC 170851, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the resigning of the Schedule G Declaration of Compliance for the period April 1st, 2016 to March 31st, 2017, of the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement, a manning agreement between the Boncher Manor Senior Adult Day Program and the Lynn for the continuation of 100% funding. 17, resolution number HCC 170848, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council authorized the Director Emergency Services Chief Paramedic Service to sign the agreement on intermunicipal response to resolve paramedic response issues between the city of Ottawa and surrounding communities. And that, the adopted deployment plan be amended accordingly. And further, that the County of Redford Paramedic Service service delivery statement be revised accordingly. And further, that a bylaw to authorize the agreement on intermunicipal response be adopted at the next session of County Council. 18, cellular telephone tower at the Lodge property. Resolution number HCC 170850, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to amend by law 4515, authorizing the warden and the CAO clerk to enter into an amendment lease agreement with Rogers Communications Inc. with regards to the installation of a cellular telephone tower at the Lodge property. Rogers Communications Inc. shall pay rent monthly in advance in the amount of $583.34 plus HST, if applicable, commencing August the 1st, 2017. Full rent will be payable on the first day of the month following the beginning of construction. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, committee members Doncaster, Dutton, Farr, Murphy, and Kingsbury.
Thank you. We will go back to number one, resident population. Number two, the CCAC waitlist information. Number three, the ambulance act legislative consultant, consultation, I'm not speaking well today, including fire medic. So this also was a hot topic at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, with both the NDP Caucus and the PC Caucus and multi-municipal delegations. I also asked the question at the bear pit of Minister Luloon, not Dr. Hoskins, because as we recognize, this is being, this is coming from the fire side and not from the paramedic side. Minister Luloon did ask Dr. Hoskin or Minister Hoskins to speak to this. He did say that it's a voluntary program. But as we all know, that, you know, we don't like ambiguous language, and things like this can become a slippery slope. So something to keep our eyes on, and we will ask the chief, of course, to make sure that we know of anything coming down from the problems. Councillor Evo?
Yes, so, again, we met in August to talk about this, and we were supportive of the paper provided by the ESSO, which is the organization for paramedic, I believe it is not true, thank you. And I thought I had this letter right. So we're supportive of the points they raised, it was a nine-page paper. As well noted, that the province needs to talk about call dispatching and triaging, and make sure the training is appropriate for that. With regards to the fire medic's position, one position, or one of the points in our position was that there needs to be a clear statement from the government that this is, first of all, a pilot program. Secondly, that any arbitration, that it couldn't be called arbitration because what could happen is that it could be enforced upon a non-disciplinary, not disciplinary, municipal, how these, we only look at the 24-hour rule for fire services, and how that has started to spread across the smaller, smaller full-time departments and composite departments. So those were, just very quickly, the key points that we were raising. And there are a couple others we've asked for some information on to incorporate, and that's incorporated into this board.
Thank you, and I probably should have expanded on the argument against the fire medic program. There are 449 fire departments in the province of Ontario. Of those, 32 are full-time, 191 are composite, and the remaining 226 are volunteer. Volunteers outnumber our full-time firefighters 2 to 1. Not only do I not see this as a workable project for our staff, but I also don't believe that we could ever afford it as lower tier or upper tier governments. So I sincerely hope that the people that want to volunteer to try this, that's fine, but that it isn't forced on us. Anything further? Number four, the special teams. Number five, the defibrillator program. Number six, the silver chain challenge. Congratulations to everybody that participated. We're all, we're all going to need it after the cupcakes. Number seven, the Lynn. Number eight, Health Links, the Communicate. Number nine, the network funding increase. Number 10, the public inquiry into long-term care. Number 11, Fiddle Fest. Number 12, the respiratory outbreak. Number 13, the Volunteers Award. Congratulations to Mrs. Donaldson. Number 14, the Boncher Manor Foundation. I'm very excited about this. I kick off ticket sales tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM at Boncher Manor. Might encourage everybody to buy their tickets and come to the gala. The Mirror Machine Gala was absolutely so wonderfully planned and executed. I'm really looking forward to the Boncher Manor one. Number 15, WSID. Resolutions, the Senior Adult Day Program. Number 17, the intermunicipal response agreement. Councillor Packett.
Thank you, Ward. And not, I don't sit on Health Committee, so I wasn't privy to the full discussions on this. However, I have been talking with Chief Nolan. And just from some of the residents who are being misled by improper information, just ask if, through you, if Chief Nolan could give, like a numbers explanation of what this is going to do for the paramedic service in the County of Redford.
Thank you, councillor Packett, and I wholeheartedly agree. I think that there, there's some misunderstanding about this agreement and where we were and where we would be after signing this. So yes, Chief Nolan, if you wouldn't mind?
Actually, through you, Ward. So the historical piece, I'll just go back to 2016 for you. So 2016, based upon the status quo definition of the province, that a paramedic will go, when they're the closest unit to any emergency, any code for priority four that the government's dispatch center assigns, resulted in 370 occurrences where the County Redford Paramedic Service responded into or within the city of Ottawa for one of their residents, based upon this broad definition of seamlessness. To contrast that versus the proposed agreement, the criteria, number one of the proposed agreement is for patients who, at the time of call, are either unconscious or in cardiac arrest, or should the resident municipality specifically request our service through our commander. So the two automatic triggers will be cardiac arrest and unconsciousness. Because we know that there is a high specificity, meaning that patients who, we receive a call for being unconscious or cardiac arrest, typically are unconscious or in cardiac arrest. The gambit of priority fours, or what is deemed life-threatening by the dispatch system, is a very broad net. So for example, if you phone and said that you had a bleeding nose, the dispatcher would ask you if it stopped. If it hasn't stopped, they would call that an uncontrolled bleed, and we would rush to your side, lights and sirens. So we know that 370 was the 2016 lived experience. And also in 2016, we went back and did an analysis of the calls that we received from Ottawa. And those that met the criteria of unconsciousness or cardiac arrest would be 15 calls in that same time period. So roughly, a call a day versus a call a month, based upon this draft agreement being signed. We know that people, again, that call, or have someone call when they're unconscious or in cardiac arrest, are in a very life-threatening situation, and there's a high probability that when we arrive, they will be unconscious or in cardiac arrest. This also aligns with the definition that the province is moving towards with the reformed dispatch system, which is a fifth level priority, it's called an echoed priority. And that defines patients who are unconscious or in cardiac arrest. The evidence supports that those patients are the most time-sensitive. And this agreement sets out that we will respond to Ottawa for those cases, and Ottawa will respond to us for those cases where their paramedic unit is closest. The other additional piece, Mayor Packett, is that we've put in a caveat that should Ottawa require our assistance, they can ask for our assistance, and we can choose to provide assistance based upon the availability of our own resources. Taking the automatic process out of the current system will give us a significant advantage to be able to utilize our resources for our residents most effectively. Additionally, even when we do respond for a patient who is unconscious or in cardiac arrest, let's say in Fitzroy Harbor, Constance Bay, Kinburn, Carver, even Canada, Ottawa has committed by this agreement that they will also send their closest available ambulance so that those paramedics can, if the circumstances permit, transport that patient to hospital, which will additionally free our resources back to the County of Redford. So the numbers specifically are, in 2016, we did 370 calls into the city of Ottawa for what were deemed emergencies. 15 of those met the criteria that were proposing cardiac arrest and unconsciousness. So that takes it down to a very manageable number, that I think we may actually find a bit of a balance with the city of Ottawa and other neighboring municipalities, so that we can, in extraordinary circumstances, commit our resources. And in other circumstances, they will have to ask very politely to use our resources and not rely upon them.
Thank you. Is that sufficient?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further? Alright, number 18, the cell tower. The report is a whole. I'll ask for a mover.
I saw move, Madam Ward.
Thank you. Owen Faker. Excellent. And we will move to Social Services Committee. Councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you, Ward. We are social, we are social services committee, I forgot, I'm shaking my mouth, I think. We, your Social Services Committee, wish to report, recommend as follows. Under information, item number one, the 2016-2017 Redford County Social Housing Registry Waitlist Statistics Comparison. Item number two, the childcare statistics. Number three, Ontario Works case load statistics. Number four, the rent increase guideline for 2018. We will note that the Redford County House and Corporation Board of Directors at their meeting in August approved a 128% rent increase for the entire Redford County House and Corporation portfolio for all new tenants and current tenants with the appropriate 90-day notice. Number five, Healthy Kids Community Challenge Update. Emma Holman, who's operating the Healthy Kids Community Challenge project, submitted her resignation at the end of July. Judy Moway Hill is now reviewing the future of the program and will report back to committee and council for direction and approval. Under resolutions, resolution number SSCC 17-08-49, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approves the participation of Ms. Laura LePeach, Manager of Ontario Works, as a member of the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association, ONSSA Policy Advisory Committee. The background is there for you. Number seven, resolution number SS-CC-17-08-52, moved by Chair and seconded by Committee. That the draft Ontario Early Years Child and Family Services Transition Plan be provided to committee and County Council for review and be brought back for consideration after September session of council. It's going to be in depth review, and we hope to infiltrate the panel the next month to know yourself of this. Number eight, resolution number SSCC 17-08-53, moved by Chair and seconded by Committee. The childcare services hire one full-time supervisor and group seven of the non-union staff salary grid, $64,247 to $73,317 plus benefits per annum, based on 1820 hours per year, to provide supervision and leadership for the integration services in the Ontario Early Years Child and Family Services centers. Number nine, resolution number SSCC 17-08-54, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. That capital expenditure early learning and childcare funding in the amount of $18,425 be approved for Columbus House and Pembroke. And the Cedar Crescent test capacity will grow from $5 hours operating 10 hours a year to $15 hours with a year-round program occurring in September 2017. Bylaws, resolution number SS-CC-17-08-52, eight dash five four, five five, whoa. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that bylaw seventeen dash seventeen, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the Ontario Transfer Agreement with the Ministry of Education for two thousand and seventeen, childcare expansion funding, be amended to include the revised Schedule D, increased funding allocation, and the addition of Schedule I, which aligns to the new early learning and childcare agreement. Number eleven, resolution number S S dash seventeen dash, S S dash C C dash seventeen dash oh eight dash five six, moved by Chair and seconded by Committee, that bylaw fifty dash seventeen be amended authorizing the County Redford Childcare Services to enter into a service agreement to provide home childcare services once all mandatory health and safety requirements are complete, with Jeff McGlocken of Redford and Cindy McKenzie of Canberra. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members E Mo Far, Kingsbury, Murphy, Ron Walden, Stan.
Thank you. I'm glad I'm not the only one with rusty today. We'll go back to information, item number one. Number two, the childcare statistics. Number three, Ontario Works caseload. Number four, the rent increase. Counselor Eamonn.
Yes, I should know this answer, I can't, if I remember it, but this rent increase guideline, does it also extend across to the rent supplements that the department provides for, for, for people with application of homelessness prevention? I know that there are some, we have a portion of the clientele who are in private rental units that we provide either supplement or, or most of the rent, does this also extend that? Ms. Laura.
Thank you. If I could just ask, Counselor Eamonn, can you just start your question again for me again?
Yes. This one point eight percent, does it extend to the contracts that we have with the providers?
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Eamonn, no, it does not. It's specific to us as the landlord for our units. And just one caveat that I would want to put on that, our R G I rent units, the rent will not increase. What it does is, and I gave this example at committee, it's like going into a hotel where on the back of the door on the hotel room, they actually, they put the cost of what the hotel is worth, but that's not what our tenants pay, or that's not what you would pay. Our R G I folks still pay based on rent geared to income, so no more than thirty percent of their income. So I just wanted to clarify that. What it helps us do, though, is put a valuation on the properties and helps us understand their value. And if we don't do that, it causes us challenges down the road in terms of asking for more money for repairs and maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further in four? Number five. Resolutions, the Policy Advisory Committee. Number seven, the transition plan. Number eight, the supervisor position. Number nine, the early learning and childcare funding. Some good news. Bylaws, number ten, the transfer payment agreement. And finally, number eleven, the home childcare agreement. The report as a whole. I'll ask for another. Thank you. All those in favor? Thanks. All right, then we will move to bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Tom Packett, that the bylaws listed on item twelve and attached here to Schedule A on the County Council Agenda dated August thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, be deemed read three times and passed.
We do have to remove bylaw C, the striking committee bylaws. All right. So you've heard the resolution in front of you, please strike C from the bylaws, all those in favor. Thank you. Okay. Any notice of motions? Counselor Donnie, you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just want to make a notice that I will bring forward a motion at the September County Council Meeting, of respect to the withdrawn motion that I made at the June twenty-eighth County Council Meeting, wherein I was going to request that the county investigate what could be done within the county to assist Canada in meeting its obligation of the Paris Accord. So I will be bringing that forward at our September Council Meeting.
Thank you. Members written motions? There are none, any new business? Counselor Donnie, you.
Thank you once more, Madam Warden. This, it was part of the, albeit a very brief part, of our Health Committee report agreed in August, but Counselor Eamonn and I both sit on Board of Health, attended at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and in meeting, a workshop presentation on the report of the expert panel on public health and the very significant proposal of incorporating public health into, kind of into, somewhat of a hybrid, but aligning it along the same lines, I guess, as the Champaign LIN, where I have, I'm not yet prepared to say where I would stand on this. I do know in reading through this expert panel report, it seems precious little emphasis, if any, was given towards the, once more, the deterioration of local input, local control over some of those things that here to fore have been exclusively municipally for those, perhaps members of County Council or unaware, currently municipalities, that is the city of Redford, County Redford, and the township of South Alkorn in the missing district, are funding twenty-five percent of the costs, and the seventy-five percent of public health costs are being supported by the province, but in fact, the municipalities are one hundred percent responsible. There is nothing in legislation that obligates the province to make that contribution of seventy-five percent. So this is a very significant change in the dynamic and the structure of how public health works. I am quite excited, I've expressed that before often through the paramedic service, in Mr. Hoskin's initiatives with regards to patients first, but one of the things that is substantially different in public health is public health doesn't have patients, public health has a population. And from that perspective alone, I have some very grave concerns about how we are going to continue within this partnership, the city, South Alkorn, and ourselves, to have significant direct input into the priorities of public health. That's coming forward, I think I discussed briefly at lunch with Counselor Visneski Moore, who also chairs the Board of Health, that I think it's probably important for both factors, is through Board of Health, but also separately and informed by the Board of Health, I think it's important that the County of Redford also take a position on this. I know that Eamonn is also developing the policy response to this rollout, but this is, this is a pretty significant endeavor that's being proposed here, and I have some very significant grave concerns, so I just want to bring that to Counselor's attention.
Thank you for that information. So the Board of Health will do somewhat of a review and bring it to Health Committee? Is that how we'll strategize on this?
My own viewpoint, and we didn't chase that that far, but this will be an item on the Board of Health agenda at the end of September. Board of Health does not meet in August, so it will be on the agenda, but I don't think the responses are necessarily identical. I think in my own framing of this, certainly the position that hopefully we can arrive at, at county is what would be informed by that developed at Board of Health, but I think it is separate also in terms of particularly the governance structure. What is being proposed is a governance structure that's going to incorporate municipal representatives, certainly, but a twelve-to-fifteen member Board of Health that will mirror the territory of the Champaign LIN. And in part of this also, there is a strong move, which I am enormously resistant to, in identifying or almost incorporating a board of technocrats, that I have a great deal of problem with, a board isn't a board, a board doesn't manage, but we seem to be moving in that direction. So there are those things that are not germane particularly to public health that I think are going to be part of what I envision is would be the appropriate response. So yes, that developed at the Redford County District Health Unit would inform the county of Redford position, but it is not the entirety of the County of Redford position in my mind.
Thank you. Counselor Eamonn.
Yes, thank you. In short, this is not a, not a comment on Counselor Donnie's presentation, in short, it's going to be the same bill steadily increasing, less ability to, to direct the resources of the health unit towards what's necessary for our respective communities, communities meaning nineteen communities that, that public health serves, public health users. So you'll have less, less local representation, the same bill with more, a regionalized planning approach with the, as Counselor Donnie has said, fifteen, twelve, fifteen members from across eastern Ontario, representing the present founders of LIN. And the comments I made at Eamonn were that we don't know who our representatives are from LIN. If we see them, it'll be because their car breaks down and they're calling C A O to come to their C, C A to come get their car, and them, and we, no. So we have no idea who, who the representative of LIN is. And after I made those comments, that became very apparent for the other members of the LIN, the municipal members too, they were sharing the same concern. So I hope that all of the local municipalities across Ontario, especially the rural municipalities that are adjacent to larger urban centers, takes this seriously because it's going to mean, should a pass change, it's going to mean less local representation, likely less investment in local community health issues, likely less timely investment of local community health issues, but the same bill, likely larger gal, because municipalities are still going to be paying for with no state. So if you need a model that you can relate to, take a look at the police services model where you're handed a bill, and you get to tinker with, you know, do we do a bike program on August first? That's good, thanks, that's what I mean, contribute to the plan. So that's what I would suggest to you is a model, there's striking familiarity too, and I'm not really comfortable with this one.
Thank you. It also seems in complete contradiction to the point of the LIN in the first place. I mean, the idea was that it was supposed to be local and have the flavor of the area, and this does sound like we could be gobbled up into Ottawa. Yeah. Okay. So definitely something to keep our eyes on, and I'm assuming that it's part of an Eamonn watch file already?
If I might get, yes, it is. And again, it's going to be an interesting discussion, given that I'm not sure some of our larger urban cousins recognize the impact, and in part with the education we have done.
Counselor Donnie, I forgot to tell you that we need that notice of motion in writing. Okay. Thank you. Anything further in new business? Seeing none, we do have a closed session to deal with the personnel matter. I would ask for a motion to go in, to close, moved by Counselor Visneski Moore, seconded by Counselor Packett. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll give our gallery and the press a chance to, and who would like to adjourn this, would I, Counselor Keller? Counselor Keller, would you like to adjourn?
Sure.
Sure. And Counselor, I saw Counselor Love's hand up. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Look at the old, like sprinting in the door. Thank you, everybody.